It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and follow this meeting of the board. This is a regular Division of Court meeting for Star County. Monday, February twenty-fourth. Let the record show that we do have a forum, everyone being present. We'd like to thank all of you for being here today, and certainly welcome. If everyone will please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Did we have any further comments?
There's none.
If not, I don't think we have any minutes, do we? Okay, so no action needed on minutes. A parole of claims, please.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. You've got the list of claims, those claims have been reviewed and we recommend that you approve.
Motion, Mr. President. Motion, Second, to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next thing is the vendors list, please.
Yes, sir, again, you should have that copy of the vendors list in front of you. There's four new vendors. Those have been reviewed and again, we recommend that they approve.
Move the pass.
Senator.
Motion, Second, to discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item seven is a report from Mr. Advalas, put it on the text stop. Mr. Advalas, welcome to Star and thank you for being here.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Wonderful pleasure to be back at Star County, Commissioner's Court, and provide a quick update of where we're at at Tech Stop. Obviously, we have a really, really good representation in your county by Eddie Garcia, our air engineer sitting back there. He communicates with you all pretty regularly. At the request of Judge Veda, I'm trying to make this a routine, if you will. Every couple of months, every six months, maybe every year, come in and give a status update of where we're at with all the various projects. My goal this morning is to make sure that we take safety into consideration. And safety is the Tech Stop's number one priority. So at every meeting that Tech Stop has, we have a safety minute. So if you will indulge me, I'll remind everybody the importance of not texting and driving, or for that matter, being on the phone. I probably wear the wristband, talk, text, crash. On the way in from Mission this morning, I cannot tell you how many vehicles I saw, or individuals in vehicles on the phone or texting. There was a gray Chrysler that was doing this. I finally backed off and said, I don't know what this guy's gonna do, right? The thing is, we think it's only a problem with teenagers or young drivers. But in reality, I've seen grandmas and grandpas out there also texting. And so, please, please, share the words. Do not text and drive, do not be on the phone and drive. You're distracted and you can cause a life. So that's the safety minute for this morning. So I wanted to talk a little bit about maintenance, where we're at in maintenance projects, construction projects, and I want to wrap up with design projects. Because at the end of the day, it's about taking a look at any and all opportunities we have here in Star County, working with the various cities that are incorporated in the area, obviously, Commissioner's Court, Judge, working all together to understand what the needs are. And so it's really, really important to make sure that we communicate on a regular basis. Like I said, Eddie Garcia keeps me informed. He sent me a weekly update, DE status report, and he talks about, not only Star County, but the other counties that he's responsible for. So he keeps me abreast of some of the challenges that we're facing here. I was sharing with the judge earlier this morning, it just amazes me the amount of traffic we have between Roma, Rio Grande. It's just USA Three is saturated. And it used to be only certain times of the day, now it's all day. And as we continue to grow in this area, traffic volumes will continue to increase. We have developments that are, you know, commercial, schools, there's been a school in Escobades that recently went up, right? And so that affects the traffic panter just one. Real quickly, what I want to do is give you an update on where we're at with our four-year plan when it comes to maintenance. And so we've identified a four-year plan, basically, for the area. And we have approximately fifteen or sixteen projects designated for Star County. I hope this laser pointer reaches all of it, oh, good. Designated for Star County. So we have in 2020, this fiscal year, we have about a million dollars' worth of scheduled seal codes. And so those projects are 649, I'm sorry, Hospital Road FM-3167, from 649 to Eisenhower. We also, and I know that it's very difficult to see on this map, but I think everybody knows where Hospital Road is, right here, right? Then we have also FM-649 from Hospital Road to US-83. We have ECA-N-2360 in the Alto Bonito area from US-83 North to End State Maintenance. Grand total of those three projects is about a million dollars.
These are seal codes?
Seal codes.
Not overlays?
Not overlays, these are seal codes.
When you say a seal code, what are we talking about?
Okay, so a seal code, in maintenance terms, is basically, we drop oil on the ground, and then we throw rock, and then we roll it, and then we come back and strike. An overlay is when we lay asphalt, usually about an inch and a half thick, and it has a smoother surface, but that's intended for roadways like USA Three that have a lot more traffic. So next, we also, I'm going into 2020, I'm sorry. The other set of seal codes, we have about three million dollars. And actually, we also have an overlay project in this group. We have about 2.3 million dollars of overlay that is currently scheduled from Arroyo Roma, in Roma, all the way to 649. And so we're gonna do an overlay on USA Three, it's much needed, and that's obviously the big project there. We have projects identified at FM-2844 in the northern part of the county, FM-1430 from USA Three to USA Three, the loop basically, that's the seal code. And then we also have FM-2294. Moving on to FY-2021, we do have a couple of remaps and seal codes. Right now, we have a project on FM-755 from 2294 to FM-490, that's a seal code. We also have a project on 2360 from basically USA Three South. That's also a seal project. Next, jumping into FY-2022, we have about half a million dollars' worth of projects. Those are PR-40, I'm sorry, that would be FM-2098 and FM-755, from FM-490 to Espanyol Road, seal codes there. Next, moving on to 2023. Now, these outer years are a little bit hard to predict, but this is what we have identified so far. There's always an opportunity to possibly accelerate projects in. We've got about half a million dollars on FM-490 from 755 to the Hidalgo County line, and also FM-2294 from 2244 to 755, once again, the rural areas. Next, we have an overlay scheduled on USA Three from FM-3167, Hospital Road, to Charco Blanco Road. And that is scheduled, that's a half a million dollar project. And then last but not least, is FM-755 from the Brookstar County Line to FM-1017, that is a seal code. All in all, it's about 6.5 million dollars that we have identified for Star County on seal codes and overlays over the next four years. We haven't seen a lot of construction activity here recently. And Eddie reminds me of that all the time. He advocates for the area, just like I advocate for the area, every opportunity we get. But there's a lot of work that will be forthcoming in construction. And so there's not too much of a construction report to give you at this point, unfortunately. So next, I'm gonna focus on the status update on what we refer to as a long-range plan. This plan, if you look at the date down here, January twenty-eighth to 2020. So we just did an update to this thing to ensure that we provide, one, a talking point for elected officials and the community to understand what's happening in and around our entire valley. Real quickly, our district is from Zapata to Heavenville to Farfuri, to Oliveira, to South. The southern most eight counties is what is referred to as a far district. Obviously, the population is right here. Star County, Hidalgo, Cameron carry the bulk of the population, and then we have more rural communities to the north. Let's focus on Star County. So Star County, I mentioned a lot of construction that's forthcoming. And so if, I know you can't read the legend down here, but if you could, you would see that anything in red are projects that have been completed. Obviously, these are some of the projects in the Star County area. Anything in green are projects that are currently funded. As an example, we have this USA Three, basically, from Loma Blanca all the way to the county line. They're gonna go to a four-lane divided highway, very similar to what we have, if you will, between Alto Bonito and Sullivan City. It's intended to be a much safer facility. We're currently buying the roadway, adjusting utilities to make that happen. The project in green is up here, and that is FM-755 from 2294 all the way to, towards the county line, really, to this point right here. This project is intended to be what is referred to as a super two. Super two is a passing lane. So you have two lanes in each, two lanes, right, one in each direction. And our goal in this area is to add a passing lane. We're gonna alternate, passing lane northbound, a couple months later, passing lane southbound, and so on and so forth. And the intent here is to allow for passing opportunities in this segment in order to alleviate some of the concerns, the safety concerns that we have in the area. We don't plan to stop there. Our goal is to realign some of these curves so that we're pushing those projects out. And I know that that's in Brooks County, but it affects the communities here in Star County. Obviously, US-281 route into Star County, to Rio Grande, is a major route. We recognize it. Is it as big or is it important at USA Three? Maybe not, but nonetheless, this is really, really important. We have Stark Amago Bridge here, and we have Sam Vale President and other community leaders that utilize this route to try and get head up north. Also here, you will see is an area in blue. And if you look at blue, are unfunded projects. So if you look at the map, in the grand scheme of things, there's a lot of unfunded projects. And that is a challenge, and that is a challenge. Our role and responsibility in the far district is to make sure that we have projects ready so that if the funding does become available, we can take advantage of that funding and make these projects become a reality. Here, FM-755, basically, from, I guess it would be from Embassy North to 2294, our goal is also to do a super two. But it's really important to note that right around this area, I think it's called La Catla, La Sabunada, and that general area, we are looking to do a project to continue the FM-755 expansion to the north. What does that mean? Right now, it's a two-lane highway. Obviously, when we completed that segment, just by starting at the Walmart, if you will, now it's, you have two lanes in each direction with a continuous left turn lane. We want to continue that segment all the way up to La Catla Road in that general area. Why? High schools there, one, but two, there's communities there, and you see it, you see the traffic volumes. And as I drive that area pretty regularly now, as I drive that area, I'm noticing also that there's a lot of brush cleaning. See the big bulldozers out there cleaning brush? And ten, fifteen, seven acre tracks, twenty acre tracks are being proposed for sale. What does that mean? Commercial business, residents, a mixture of industrial perhaps, I don't know. But I know something's coming, otherwise, why would they be clearing out those areas? And some of that is for cattle pastures, I get that. But some of that is also for development opportunities. So we want to be ahead of the curve. We don't want to be reacting after the fact, come in and expand this roadway if we know that the need is there. So we're already working and identifying this as a candidate project. We're working with Eddie Garcia and his staff to see what we can do. Next, I want to focus on two big projects that really, in the grand scheme of things, are gonna be game changers for Star County, in my opinion. State Loop 195. And we've been talking about this project now for several years. State Loop 195 runs from Loma Blanca, just north of Roma, all the way to the current 755. In red, there's a 755 project that was recently completed. This project, twenty-two, twenty-four miles long, we have been, we have already received authority to start purchasing roadway. That is a huge step. Because without roadway being purchased, we cannot adjust utilities. And although the environmental clearance is not done or completed as of today, it will be completed by July of this year. And so we'll have all the ducks in a row when it comes to the environmental and the schematics. And then on top of that, we're already starting to purchase roadway and possibly some utility adjustments that go with that as well. That's important because this project is divided into three segments. Segment number one is from 755 to 3167 Hospital Road. Then we have segment number two from Hospital Road to FM-649 that goes to its house. And then the last segment, 649 to Loma Blanca. Three projects, approximately 300 million dollars is what we're estimating at this point. I mentioned earlier that we're starting the roadway acquisition. It'll be in the first two projects that we start a roadway acquisition. And just Friday afternoon, we've got authority to start on this one as well, the third link. So that's our intention, folks. We want to make sure that we provide this much-needed USA Three relief route. I have to be real careful when I say relief route and not bypass. Because when we use the word bypass, it has a negative connotation, right? Hey, you're bypassing the communities of Roma, Escobades, Rio Grande, and so on and so forth. We're not bypassing anybody. All we're doing is trying to provide some relief for a much congested USA Three. I mentioned on the overlay project, that is very congested. Yeah, about forty thousand vehicles a day that traverse USA Three right now. What happens when there's a closure on USA Three due to, say, an accident? I think it was at Los Morenos, right? A couple years back, we had a pretty major accident. There is no direct state route east-west in this area. So that's the reason why State Loop 195, and we've been advocating for this project for many, many years. It's also an area, when you start looking, connectivity from the Lower Rio Grande Valley up towards Laredo. We have an interstate, basically, we're building the La Jolla relief route. It's currently in construction, and we just left the next segment. That'll be completed in about two years or so, two and a half years. USA Three, we want to be able to get traffic in and around this heavily congested area to separate through traffic, eighteen-wheelers namely, from the regular behavior traffic, and provide an opportunity for circulation in this area. Why is that important? Because when you start looking at development opportunities to the north, we have some major roads that connect now, and we're considering some other off-system roadways to be able to provide access up here. When you build a new roadway, what happens? If you build it, they will come, is the old saying, and that's exactly right. And once a roadway is built, there'll be more traffic. Once there's more traffic, there's a need for convenience store. There may be a need for Dollar General, or maybe it'll be commercial or what have you. So it is gonna provide, in my opinion, an economic development opportunity for Star County as a whole, working its way north and developing these general areas. The other project I want to focus, any question on State Loop 195? The other project is State Loop 195 Extension. And so even though this isn't built already, we already tagged this State Loop 195 Extension. Why is that important? Well, we all understand that USA Three will continue to grow, and there's gonna be traffic that increases. What we're looking at doing is connecting State Loop 195 right there at the intersection of 755. And if you will, I wish I had a bigger map, but if you will, go around, cross 755, head up north. This right here in green is a reserve, US-1011 Reserve. Can we go through there? Yes, but it would be, it would take basically an act of conquest. So our intentions are to cross 755, head up north, and just north of the reserve, the Lisa Road, approximately, we would cut across and go into Hidalgo County, eventually tying up to Monte Cristo Road, FM-755. The reason that's important, once again, it provides an opportunity for economic development to the north, provides an alternate route to USA Three. In case we had a close, this other route will be available. I know it may be a little difficult to see, but bear with me. This is considered the Hidalgo County Loop. A loop that's very much like Interstate 410 in San Antonio, or 610 in Houston. This one day will be very similar to that. So the intent here is to connect Star County to this area and this area, right, the current USA Three. So that people would have the option, if they want to go down to the lower valley, or they want to go to the upper valley, they would have that opportunity. Once all is said and done, if we start looking at other projects like the I-69 Connector, the Outer Parkway in Cameron County, FM-106, and the Second Causeway, we should be able to go from northern Roma to South Padre Island. Right now, how much time does it take? Somebody from Roma, how much time does it take to go to the island?
Two and a half hours.
Two and a half hours. If you're lucky, and you didn't get any accidents, and you got all the green lights in La Jolla, right? I always joke about La Jolla, because for years, La Jolla, you have to slow down, that story. Our intent is this route would be approximately an hour and fifteen minutes to an hour and a half. Why? Because it's gonna be a controlled access facility, four-lane divided highway, vamos. And that's the intent, right? And so here down in the valley, this is USA Three or Interstate Two, 160,000 vehicles a day utilize that road there. We know we're gonna be congested. We're already congested. I mean, if you travel that area now, it used to be just at certain times of the day, now it's busy all the time. We want to provide a parallel route east and west from north of Roma all the way to the island. That's the intent here, okay? That's the big picture. I will pause to see if there are any questions on the long-range map, on construction or maintenance projects.
Yes, sir, I got a question for you.
Yes.
When this thing first started, they were supposed to start here at, before you get to railroad tracks and come down towards the road here, where you all built that, here close to Walmart. I don't see it in the picture. Apparently, it was supposed to be coming back. It was supposed to start there where the Blac Chappa House used to be.
So you're talking about this corridor here?
Yeah.
It's no longer in the map?
That's a gang reserve.
There's a reserve there that is presenting a major challenge. There's obviously the railroad track. There's communities.
No, you were not going to go to railroad track, it was before that.
But we had to cross the railroad track.
To the wildlife refuge, so, I mean, yes, you could go through there, you just mentioned that.
Yeah, but it would take maybe twenty years.
Yeah, but we haven't started yet, you know. We started first when the plans were made, when they first started. Well, now it's just another picture, it's not gonna be done.
So what we are doing as a temporary measure, if you will, is we expanded FM-755. The project was accelerated, and the idea is you can come here, take 755, and then be on your way. This leg, we are looking at this new project that would have, even though it's longer, this is about twenty-two, twenty-three miles, even though it's longer, it is one that provides additional roadway. It provides an alternate to USA Three, and it provides an opportunity for economic development, okay? So I know that your concern or your question, yes, we used to show a blue line right here that would go from State Loop 195 through, there's also a reservoir out there, as some of you may know. There's all of those subdivisions, then there's Blac Chappa House and all these areas. There's some major challenges in this route, and that's why we have stepped back. We have looked, what is more realistic? What is more important? What is more, what is a better opportunity? And that's why we're considering this. Could we put it through here? If we start doing route studies and this is basically X town, well, then we'll have to go back to this. But we think, just in preliminary engineering, that this new route, State Loop 195 Extension, will provide a better opportunity for Star County.
I guess what we would need, and I'm sure you're gonna work in there, are connectors from the new route down to, this is 83 or the current 83.
Would that be our responsibility, or Tech Stop's responsibility?
So right now, it is your responsibility.
Our responsibility.
Yeah, because, and I did mention, obviously, we have USA Three right here. This is 649, this is 3167, and 75. Roads like, as an example, San Culejang Road, potentially could be extended, or maybe Embassy.
And Frat Ramírez and Ebony also.
And Ebony, those may be opportunities to be able to connect here because we recognize and understand that if you put a roadway up here and you have no connection to it, nobody's gonna use it, right? And so our goal is to work with this community and figure out, aside from 83, 649, 3167, 755, what other roadways could we put in here to provide that kind of?
Okay, but when you say that would be our responsibility, we would petition the state for assistance, couldn't we?
No, no, that's exactly right. And so I think later on, we'll have a conversation about potentially the RGV NPO, and we'll get into more details later on. But one of the things that is an opportunity, I guess is the best way to put it. When we say it's the local responsibility, that's city and/or county, one of the options or the opportunities is to leverage projects. As an example, projects like this one down here that's now funded. That project was developed by the Hidalgo County RMA. They went in, they did the engineering, the environmental, the schematics, the engineering, had a shovel-ready project and came to Tech Stop, look, we have a project that's ready to go. Tech Stop asked the question, what have you done? Well, we have spent X amount of millions of dollars to get it to this point. By the way, that's a 255 million dollar project. The Hidalgo County and the RMA spent a good portion of money upfront and then came to Tech Stop. Why is that important? Because it's about leveraging. We cannot continue to function like we used to function, say, twenty, thirty years ago. Twenty, thirty years ago, a community would go up to Austin Tech Stop Commission and say, we want this project. Approved. Well, now that we've been doing that, we have recognized and realized that there's projects that are needed in Houston, Dallas, for work, Austin, San Antonio, course of avenues, right? But how does a Tech Stop Commission and Tech Stop Administration rank these projects? We have some processes, but one of the biggest part is to have community involvement, community participation here. We did all this upfront, and in some cases, I can share some experiences, for example, in Laredo, put in a million dollars, and they got ten million dollars back. In Hidalgo County, Commissioner Flores over here puts in twenty-five percent, and they get a, they put in a, una percent, they put in twenty-five cents, and they get a dollar back. So what is the community gonna be doing moving forward? We, Eddie Garcia, namely, myself, and the rest of the staff, will make ourselves available to have these type of discussions with you all to see what are the opportunities? What understandings could we reach to be able to work together to develop these projects?
Well, I had to discuss this with you earlier. Do you have, well, funding for the project like the one we discussed? And we have some culverts out there that are plugged up that water runs over the highway. A little farther down over the, where I told you. Is there any funding allocated for that kind of project to clean up all those culverts?
Yeah, we have funding for maintenance-type projects, we have funding for construction, we have funding for design. So to answer your question, yes, there is funding. What we have to do is look at all the candidate projects. The candidate projects are submitted, there's, I mentioned eight counties. We have eight maintenance sections. So each section submits projects, and we rank them, and we identify what are the highest priority. And like anything else, just like the county has a budget, we have a budget too. We're gonna go until the money runs out. And our intent and our goal every year is to spend every penny of our budget. So we have identified some projects that need to be worked on, and we'll continue to evaluate and rank them as part of priority.
Mr. Gravas, you started your presentation with the traffic along 83, and apparently, you're very familiar with it. Something very simple, probably a local issue belongs to Eddie. A traffic light is needed in Guerra Garza, 83. Because that new school in La Rosita is pretty difficult to follow.
Okay, we'll work with our transportation operation folks to come and do a signal count.
Guerra Garza, 83.
Guerra, Garza, and 83. Is that what that new school is at?
Yes, sir.
To do a signal, we follow a signal warrant, we do the counts, it's justified, school being there, that obviously gets a lot of extra attention. We will work through that. Once it's warranted, we will work with our staff to look at the possibility of adding a signal. By the way, for everybody's information, a signal cost about a hundred thousand dollars, just saying.
I'm concerned, we start off, you said you started off at Loma Blanca, right?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I know where Loma Blanca is at. My concern is this, how long has it been that you guys have created a farm-to-market road? Why? Because I already contacted Mr. Gravas, we've been talking about Loma Blanca, for you guys to build a farm-to-market road. We need another relief route. The other day, like, let's say a year ago, we had a real bad accident, like a mile west of Loma Blanca, and people had to go through Loma Blanca and then Alvaro Road to turn around and maintain it.
Yes.
So, I mean, Alvaro, Loma Blanca has a lot of traffic now due to a lot of solar farms that have been created through Loma Blanca, and also, we have wind farms out there. I don't know, you guys could help us out to, if there's a way we can make it a farm-to-market road, so we can go and connect to Guerra? Because I mean, there's a lot of need out there. And unfortunately, we don't have the resources enough, because in order for me to go ahead and caliche all the road, man, I'll probably lose all my budget. It's a desperate need out there. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
You mentioned Joe Flores, but... You mentioned Joe Flores, but he's got a budget of probably fourteen, fifteen million compared to us, or one hundred million.
It's all relative. Although he has a much bigger budget, he also has a lot of bigger needs, right? So it's all relative. So to answer your question, Commissioner, we have added roads, FM roads to our system, okay? There is a process in place and I'm going to just use this as an example. This project in blue right here is called East Loop. It's the Los Tomates Bridge in Brownsville to the Fort Brownsville. This project is a project that Cameron County, RMA in Cameron County have come to us and said, look, we want to build this project. They're doing what I talked about earlier over here. They're doing all the P S and E environmental, the plans are going to come to us and say, can you make this project off system? Right now, it's East Loop. It doesn't have typically FM state highway, US route or interstate. If it has a number behind it, usually it's a state road. This is, identify this East Loop. What we are talking about today is will that design, if we can remove other FM roadways? As an example, it's, let me get my bearings here. Right in this area, there's an FM fifteen ninety-nine, two miles of state road that leads, doesn't connect to anything. I know. And so the point being is, we're going to look at trading off a couple of county FM roads in Cameron County, taking them off the system and adding this one. So then my question for, for you all to consider, are there any candidate project, any roads here that we could potentially take off?
Well, there's none. And, and the reason is that, and this is certainly before your, your time in your administration, Stark County has historically been left behind by Idaolo and Cameron as far as Texas is concerned. So we, we have very few farm-to-market roads in Stark County. For the size of our county, you can see it right there. You know, we, we have very little transportation from the state in Stark County, so we could not trade off anything.
Okay. And, and that's okay. I agree with you. I mean, look at the size of Stark County, how many roads are in this dark gray or whatever color this may be? Very, very few, very few. And so the population is only going to grow north, right? We have a constraint on the river, we can, we're not going to grow south, we're only going to grow north. That's why we're trying to do this project now.
That's why I'm asking for Loma Blanca.
We have one, we have one here, there's a Pimienta Road right in front of the school and connects all the way to, to seven fifty-five. It's a relief route, running in Gafiasville, where the school is. That road hits all the way down to seven fifty-five. And then we got pipeline road that goes all the way to four ninety. That should be farm-to-market road.
And so we will take that into consideration, Commissioner?
Because there is a lot of traffic out there, there's a lot of ranchers. If it rains, sometimes those ranchers can't bring their cattle off to market, so they're going to have to probably wait a week. You know what happens, they'll start calling us and we'll head out there with our machinery and start fixing roads, pero, I understand, I mean, we need some other access out there north.
Yes. And so earlier, we were talking about connecting right here and right here. Well, then we need to start looking at maybe doing this at Loma Blanca as well, right? What we're going to need from, from the community is, of all those projects, which is your highest priority project? You need a ranking, how much money are we talking about? We can sit down with you and estimate the length and things like that to make some decisions. There's been projects, I'm going to go back about twenty years or so, Athens. Athens, the state came in, we helped out, we participated, but it remains an off-system road. We came in and assisted and then we just stepped back and allowed the community and the county and city to take care of it, right? So there has been opportunities like that in the past. We will take that into consideration for Loma Blanca. And I also would like to challenge all the commissioners and then the judge to start looking at, okay, between here and here, what are the best candidate projects to extend up? Right? And so maybe you all can have a little workshop or you can have a discussion as to what would be important to you, prioritize, rank the projects, and then we can sit down and talk about.
Sit down with the mayor to see what we can do out there.
This is a wonderful presentation to start things off. As I said, you wanted to start coming back more often, more often to, to inform the community and the Commissioners Court. If I could request something that would, I think, the Commissioners, aid the Commissioners and the county itself, if your office could provide Stark County map alone on the different projects? Because I was trying to go through the website right, real quickly. I could not, and I think I'm pretty web savvy, I could not get to it. I have no idea how to get to it on the web. So I think it'd be wonderful if you could be available, put that up on our, on our Facebook page at least, on these proposed projects in Stark County and maybe get the Commissioners individualized precinct area of projects that are in line so Commissioner Peña can see what's coming up in his precinct, so he can compare.
Eddie, if you don't mind, please make note, we can, we can get from our district, district maintenance, we had the four-year plan, and it's, there's a map already out there, we just have to provide it. So we'll get you that map here in a, in a week or two.
Yeah, the Texas that website, I mean, obviously, y'all are engineers for highways, not websites, because it's really conversable. There's a lot, there's just a lot.
So our goal is, because we have the, all eight counties, but we also have them by individual county. What we will do is forward you the one for Stark County alone.
Please.
We'll, we'll get you a copy of that so you all can put it on your website.
Thank you.
On our website, possibly.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Gracias, we appreciate you coming over and inviting us with this information and we'll be getting back with you on some of our needs with Eddie. So we, we do thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gracias.
Yes, sir. We started with technical.
Yes, sir.
Judge, I had a question. There's, I've heard that some communities, some cities and some counties have started their own mile, mile, half-mile arterial systems or maps within their general area. And then what they do is their planning department contacts the owners of the property and say, this line will be a future roadway or future arterial. And then they, they don't, you ask the people to donate and if this may expedite the prioritization of different projects within each city from each county, I don't know whether you want to consider that necessarily or not. I know that it's been done in other parts of the state.
Very, very good point, Mr. Scamia. Yeah, I know, and we should work on something like that. I'll get our planning department to, to start working on that because I know in Idaolo County, when, when you submit a platform to government, they tell you, we have a cross here, so you have to donate that.
You have to donate the land and the acquisition of property is one of the biggest initial starters and then once you start, and that'll give you, that'll give Mr., well, the Texas, Mr. Texas out here, because I think this is the best district engineer we've had. I can go back now, seven district engineers, this is the best one we've had so far. I want to thank you for what you're doing.
So Mr. Scamia, what we refer to as called a thorough plan and that plan does work because when all is said and done, you just start identifying roadways, but also drainage needs and development needs. So thorough plan, starting.
We're ready to donate Loma Blanca, you guys are ready.
Judge, just real quick, I, one of the other reasons we're hoping Mr. Gracias could answer a question is that request from the RMA potentially for Stark to join on the planning process. And I know there were some lingering questions about if there was any responsibilities and what the, and what the pros were to potentially do it. I don't know, Mr. Gracias.
We, we have a follow-up meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right. That's all right.
Again, thank you, Mr. Gracias. If it's all right with the court, I see Judge Roldes waiting there patiently for us to move into executive session so we can go ahead and, I know he's had other things to do with that, you know, the court.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it is, it's ten forty and pursuant to section.
Tomapazi Querito, un buen grupo.
By one point oh seven four, we're not going to executive session, as ordered salaries and the OCA.